Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on February 2nd, 2023. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2023 through January 2024. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 17th, 2023. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 13th, 2023 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 103, the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 remains in place to ensure that the state continues to have the necessary resources as COVID-19 is managed on an endemic level. Therefore, notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. And as with formal applications, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment on concept plans presented to the board for informal review. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if you're participating by phone by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. And please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli? Here. Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax? Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Radekheimer?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, announcements. Members of the board and staff, I know Mr. Lesko, as always, will have an announcement about master plan work and how that's progressing. So why don't you go first? Justin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the Master Plan Steering Committee held a meeting on January 25th, uh, last Wednesday. Um, it was our first meeting since, uh, early December. Um, and we will have, uh, a full schedule till the end of the, uh, process, uh, to adoption of the plan at these, uh, at Planning Board hearings. That's coming soon. Um, there are some changes in our schedule, uh, to allow for subcommittees of that steering committee uh, to look at individual elements or topic areas. Um, but we will, uh, keep everyone updated at engaged.pristinemasterplan.org. Um, and obviously, uh, the board members through email um, of, uh, the next open house and community visioning survey, and then ultimately, uh, the, uh, master plan hearings and anything else that might come up.
Great. So when we get the updated work plan from Clerk Caden and Hints, um, obviously, you'll, you'll, um, forward that to the steering committee. Will you also send it to the, to the entire planning board?
Sure, certainly.
Yeah. Um, other announcements or uh, from, uh, board members or from staff?
Yeah, I've just, I just wanted to note that, um, uh, Jack, uh, Taylor has found the, um, these meetings so stressful that he's going to the Serengeti for several weeks. To get away.
Jerry, you've always been good at identifying what's really important.
I'm, I'm here to tell you, and I know Jack already knows this. It's a very long flight.
Oh, 23 hours.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, okay, any other, thanks for that, Jerry, uh, and Jack. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to oaths of office. I think, uh, Julie and Zenon. Um, Jerry will formally formally swear you in. You're prepared, prepared for that, Jerry?
Yes, I am. Um, and if both of you can raise your right hand, I think I'm gonna swear you in together. Um, and then I'll read it. Um, and we did, you know, kind of line by line, and then you'll repeat it, and that'll be it. Um, and it's, uh, I, and then go ahead. No, start with Zenon, go ahead. I, Zenon, Texarney.
I, Zenon, Texarney.
Okay, and Julie?
I, Julie Capizoli.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
And I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the same
To the same
and to the governments established in the United States
And to the governments established in the United States
and in this state
And in this state
under the authority of the people
Under the authority of the people
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly
Solemnly swear
that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly
And justly
perform all the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member
Perform all the duties of the Office of Planning Board Member
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my abilities
so help me God
So help me God
Congratulations.
Okay.
Okay.
Is it just me, or is that getting longer?
It just seems, you know, because I, I'm now making the sections shorter. Um, because the la, I think the last time I did it before that, it might have been David who said, whoa, these are going on too long, and can you cut it, cut them down a little bit?
It, it, yeah, it's, um, it's a simple thing, but it's surprisingly complicated when it's you doing it. You're speaking the, speaking the words.
Right, right.
All right, well, thank you for that, um, Julie and Zenon. It's terrific to formally have you um, uh, back with the board and, um, so with that, let's move on to subcommittee reports. Are there subcommittee reports to here tonight? Anything related to site plan or the ad hoc committee or anything? I think site plan is going to meet soon.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and, um, all right, then, let's let's consider the minutes. We have minutes from July 7th, 2022. This was a regular meeting. Anybody have, um, suggested edits or corrections to those minutes? And if not, would someone like to move them?
I'll move approval.
Um,
a second.
Uh, moved by Mr. Quinn. Was that, was that you, Tim?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Mr. Cohen. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And anyone who's, um, not eligible will not be counted. Um, not eligible by way of having missed the meeting. Um, okay, next up, we have a resolution in support of Billy Johnson Mountain Lakes Preserve stewardship funding. Um, Ms. Lesko, you wanna get us started? And I see that, um, Wendy Mager is here as well to fill in any blanks and, um, and say anything she would like to say about this. Go ahead.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, as you saw in, uh, the link sent out, uh, there's a resolution um, that was crafted, uh, with our open space manager Cindy Taylor and Friends of Princeton Open Space for the planning board's support towards a grant. This is similar to a request that the board received, uh, I think in 2017, uh, maybe 2019, um, that was successfully, uh, acquired, uh, for restoration. Uh, this specific grant, uh, is for a stewardship, uh, grant from NJDEP and Green Acres for a riparian restoration project at Billy Johnson Mountain Lakes Preserve. It involves removing invasive plants with hand tools and planting native trees and shrubs along the lakeshore and stream bank, stream banks, and where trees have been lost. Um, and protecting, uh, existing and new plants from deer, uh, by Cajun, uh, the plants, uh, not the deer. Um, it supports the master plan goals for preserving environmentally sensitive areas, protecting tree canopy, protecting wildlife habitat, uh, and I'm summarizing right now from the, uh, resolution itself. Um, but, you know, feel free to, to read into that or ask any questions. Um, a resolution of support is required for the grant, uh, from the planning board and separately from the mayor and council. And, um, just one thing, there are minor changes that have, uh, come to light, uh, really today, um, regarding the resolution that, that you saw in your package. Um, and it's more like 20 acres are to be restored rather than 25, uh, and Wendy can go further into this, uh, if she would like. Um, and the amount of the grant applied for will also be higher. Um, so, uh, the point of the resolution um, tonight is whether, you know, this, this grant is supportive of master plan goals, not necessarily the amount or the acreage. Um, so the easy fix might be to just remove some language, really the numbers from the resolution. Um, if you want to do that by motion, uh, I, I think, Jerry, that, that could probably work.
Yeah, that, that would be fine.
Okay, and we have some draft language for that. It's really just eliminating, I think, in there 25 acres and $50,000, um, but just eliminating them entirely. Um, it, it won't change the, you know, the reason why, the, the ask that you have, um, or the end result, um. And I have a map that was supplied by FOPOS if you would like to see it. Um, and while I'm doing that, um, uh, Ms. Mager is here, um, if there are any questions for her, or if there's anything else she would like to say.
Wendy, welcome.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate you giving me some time this evening. Um, as I think most of you know, Friends of Princeton Open Space, uh, a charitable organization, holds the conservation easements on the Mountain Lakes Preserve and, um, we, uh, have been, um, very active with restoration, uh, ecological restoration work in the preserve, particularly over the last five years. Um, as Justin mentioned, in 2017, the Planning Board, uh, gave us a resolution, uh, in support of our forest restoration project, which is in the area on the left-hand side of this map shown in green, and that was an 18-acre project also funded by Green Acres that we successfully completed. So now we're moving on to the other, uh, colored areas, um, that are designated as, um, riparian areas. And, um, basically, uh, we're trying to do everything, um, along the shores of the lake and the, uh, up to the inlet and outlet streams, uh, on the north and south. Um, we did, uh, already complete an area at the northern end of the lake, which is why that's not included on this map or in the project. Um, but it's a wonderful project, and, uh, we've been encouraged actually by Green Acres uh, to apply, so I'm very optimistic about our chances of once again uh, being successful and being able to, uh, make this an even more beautiful park with uh, better habitat, uh, and more interesting things for all the citizens of Princeton to see. So, that's about it.
Thank you. Um, I would just add that as a, um, an independent nonprofit, um, the Friends of Princeton Open Space is a, a really close partner, um, with the town, not just as the holder of the easement, but as the, um, convener and inspiration for a bunch of volunteers who go out there and do great work. I was walking over there the other day, and I, and it's very, very noticeable, um, the work that has already been done and very noticeable where it hasn't been done. So, um, it's really, really, um, you know, good to know that, that we've been encouraged, you've been encouraged, um, by DEP to, to apply. Um, and also, as a, as a nonprofit, FOPOS is, um, has access to pots of money that the municipality does not have access to, so it, it helps to leverage local tax dollars, um, and, uh, and that's a really valuable, um, aspect of the partnership as well. So everybody knows where I stand on it. Um, would anyone like to, uh, to move this, or, or does anyone have questions that they'd like to pose for, for Justin or Wendy or anyone? Mr. Cohen?
Wendy, I wonder if you can just, um, explain a little bit what the, how the ex closure, the deer ex closure areas function and what purpose they serve in the restoration process?
Sure, well, one of the reasons that, um, there's a great need to plant, uh, native trees and shrubs uh, in the preserve is because, um, there has been die-off of the existing canopy due to things like Emerald Ash Borer, uh, storms, um, and in some cases, just trees getting to their, the end of their lives, um, and, uh, the new, uh, saplings that try to come up and fill in uh, are, uh, destroyed by either being browsed by deer repeatedly, or, uh, at certain times of year, the, they're rubbed by deer, which rubs the bark off and kills the trees in that way. So, um, for the forest restoration project, we built a very robust, uh, deer ex closure that contains about eight acres of that project area. Um, we're not gonna build any new uh, fencing, fenced ex closures for this project. The map you saw does show two existing uh, fenced areas. One was created after the, um, dam restoration project because, uh, trees had been cut uh, for a staging area for the equipment, so that was to enclose the replacement trees. And the other one is a fence that we built that is, um, a little bit shabby at this point, um, so we're gonna, um, you know, try to, um, repair it, um, but, um, the, the main, uh, deer protection uh, component of this project of the grant request is, uh, individual caging of uh, trees that we are planting.
Okay.
Thanks. Um, other questions? And if not, would someone like to move this resolution?
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Texarney, seconded by Mr. Chow. Um, let's do a roll call. Could you call the roll, please? Carrie?
Sure, Madam Chair, before we get to that, the motion is with the changes, the, the removal of the two numbers.
Yes, so the, 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 there's one whereas on the front page that says, whereas FOPOS has developed a riparian restoration plan for the preserve that excludes the acreage number. And two lines down from that, or two whereas is down from that, whereas FOPOS is applying for a stewardship grant from NJDEP slash Green Acres. So just omitting the reference to the, the acreage and the dollar amount which are purposes.
Great, thank you.
So, yeah, thank you for that clarification. Um, moved by Mr. Texarney and seconded by Mr. Chow, um, Ms. Philip?
Yes, Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, thank you again, Wendy Mager, um, for this and for all that you do. Um, moving on to a conceptual review, we are looking at, um, a concept plan from RB Homes Incorporated. Um, this is an informal review, 344 Nassau Street, block 45.01, lot 101, and its file number P2222-163P. Uh, Mr. Lesko?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, as you said, this is a concept review at 344 Nassau Street. Um, the, uh, applicant is here, um, but of course, you know, this is just a concept. They're not bound to any of the ideas, and you're not bound to any of them either. Um, I will give a summary of my memo, which was included in your packet, uh, which I worked on in consultation with our zoning officer and land use engineer. Um, and I'm going to share, uh, a bunch of things, I think. So I'm waiting for Google Maps to open. So first off, uh, the property, uh, is here at North Harrison, uh, and Nassau Street on the corner, uh, the big white building. Uh, there's several offices in there now. Um, here's a view from the front. Uh, here are some of the neighbors. And then, just moving around, here's the view from North Harrison Street. Um, so I'm going to switch to the zoning map now. This is, uh, within the affordable housing overlay two, uh, so that's the dashlines here. Um, the underlying zoning is neighborhood business. It's, uh, right here on the corner. Um, this property is also in the Jugtown Historic District. Um, all of the above, locally designated and state and nationally, um, you know, on those registers as well. Um, I believe it's going to the, uh, Historic Preservation Commission for a concept review. Um, and I, you know, I thank the applicant, um, for doing either of these concept reviews, um, and especially both, uh, if that's the way they go. Um, you know, the point of this is really to be productive and for all of us to get a, you know, a, a final application and product that, uh, you know, we've worked through and thought out, uh, everything. Um, I think Ms. Capizoli can probably attest to the fact that, uh, when the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, reviews, uh, a concept, and then it comes back, um, the hearings go, you know, a lot smoother, and I think, uh, you know, it ends up being a, an added benefit for all parties involved. Um, so getting off my soapbox for a second. Um, here are the site plans of, uh, the review. Um, this isn't obviously fully engineered, uh, drawings or anything like that, so if I gloss over anything, you know, i- it's not because we're not thinking about it, or, or, you know, it, it won't come up during the hearing. Um, but it is, you know, like, looking at this sketch, obviously, you know, the intention is to have windows, let's say, um, so we're not gonna comment, uh, on that. Um, so, um, the concept calls for a mixed-use building that's 45 feet tall, uh, and four stories with 20 total residential units and an office on the first floor. Um, there's a 20% set aside requirement for affordable housing, as, like I said, this is under the AHO2. Um, and I, th- this is the first project we're seeing in the AHO2. Um, here is the first floor, uh, site plan. Parking is in the rear, um, roughly where it currently is, and it would be under an addition, so no longer just out in the open. Um, the frontage remains the same, um, though, uh, the applicant, uh, you know, has stated some parts in the rear of the existing building, uh, would be removed. Um, and this building is required to be retained for the AHO2 ordinance. Um, and I'll, I'll come back to that in a minute. Um, you know, you, you might be thinking back to our last meeting when we were talking about this uh, at the other one and the process for that, um. So there are variances identified, uh, the ones identified by the applicant based on what they've already, uh, presented are for these two stacked parking spaces, um, and potentially for the size of the parking spaces. Uh, so, a- and I'm happy to go more into the AHO2. It requires the building to be, uh, retained. It requires a 20% set aside. Um, we could go into specifics if you would like as well. Um, but just kind of the, the broader staff comments here, um, are that, uh, you know, and I'll go one by one before inviting the applicant to speak. Um, the intent of the, uh, AHO2 is to reinforce the existing pattern of development uh, in this Jugtown area, um, with ground floor commercial uses and residential above. Uh, what we're seeing here and with staff is, is kind of shaking our heads, uh, you know, questioning is, um, uh, it appears, you know, nearly half or more of the building is actually dedicated, uh, to accessory uses for the residential component, so for the three stories above, you know, there's this common room, there's an entry, there's tenant storage. Um, and there's only, you know, 825, 820 square feet of office, um, compared to what's there today, which is, you know, basically the whole first floor, uh, is office space. Um, the next staff comment is that, uh, it is about that building retention, uh, requirement. Um, some of the rear is proposed, uh, to be removed, um, in the past with some of the AHO1 applications over on North Tulane, um, or, uh, Nassau. Um, you know, there has been some flexibility from the board there, uh, so you may just want to discuss your thoughts here. Uh, and I'd be happy to show the rear of the building, which I know the, um, the applicant has some more information about as well. Uh, and then, uh, continuing on, um, the applicant should discuss their plan for circulation of both cars and people, uh, including accessible routes. Um, the parking at the White Coat Building next door goes through this lot. That's the only entrance in, uh, so the applicant should discuss how that'll work, um, you know, both on the ground, but also legally through whatever instrument is required. Uh, and the applicant should discuss, uh, how garbage trucks will access the trash area uh, which is being shown here under, um, you know, that, that parking area that's under the three stories of building. Um, and also how tenants will move in or out, uh, since there's not any on-street parking uh, in this area, uh, so where those moving trucks, you know, might go, or if there's a plan in place, uh, to get around that, um. You know, again, just as a general idea, not as a way to, uh, you know, discourage anything or be unnecessarily, uh, you know, uh, negative on the project. Um, and then the next comment, under the, uh, AHO2 ordinance, uh, parking for non-residential uses has to comply with the requirements of the underlying zoning that neighborhood business. Um, there are regulations regarding parking lots of 10 or more spaces uh, with the requirement that there's a, uh, four-foot landscape buffer around the parking area. Um, we're obviously not seeing that here. Um, but there is flexibility for the board to modify or waive that requirement, um, if it borders another uh, parking lot, which, uh, most, if not all of this, does border, um, the foot doctor over there. Um, the other option is, uh, the board could waive or modify that requirement, uh, and have a screening wall or fence there if plantings are determined to be impractical or inappropriate. Um, so the applicant should just discuss, you know, which way they're leaning, and, and the board will probably want to give feedback on that. Um, the appetite for any of those options. And then, uh, just lastly, um, of the 20, uh, proposed rooms, um, apartments in those three stories above, uh, it's almost 50/50, one and two bedrooms, and then there's, uh, one three-bedroom apartment, so I think it's nine one-bedroom, 10 two-bedroom, or maybe vice versa. Um, and that's great, you know, we, we've seen that there's a need for apartments, um, a- and they're all a variety of sizes, more so doing, uh, you know, having to do with the unique, unique shape of the property and, you know, keeping the building in the front. Um, but the question is, um, you know, have any other layouts been considered that would add additional variety in the number of bedrooms, you know, maybe more three or four bedrooms, and then that might also affect, uh, the applicant's parking requirement, too. Um, so with that being said, um, Madam Chair, that's all I have for now. Um, I'm happy to take any questions, or if you want to hear from the applicant at this time.
Any question, uh, Mr. Quinn? You're, you're on mute.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Justin, I wondered if you could, um, describe the historic protections that are in place, and I, I noted in the narrative that was provided by the, by the applicant that, um, there's, eh, I would think that in a corner lot, if our, our sort of standard is that it must be visible from the, from the sidewalk, that that would pertain to the part on Harrison Street as well as, uh, what fronts on Nassau Street, and I have a couple of questions that are more about the, the building itself. I'm very familiar with it and, uh, Jug Town Historic District, I lived nearby, uh, but I'm wondering, like, how the historic protections apply to this, to this proposal. It seems to me that you can't, that if it allows for, um, for for the buildings to be visible from the, you know, from the street, that building, uh, a large apartment building will make that building not visible from Harrison Street.
Hmm. So this would go through the, uh, Historic Preservation Commission, you know, as an advisory board, um, before it came back, uh, in any application for development. Um, it would also, i- if what's proposed, uh, you know, was their ultimate plan, uh, that demolition permit requirement would have to be, uh, you know, issued by the HPC with the hearing, um, for just that portion in the rear. That's not just to the whole building or, or anything like that. Um, so the HPC would, you know, ha- has a good amount of say, um, especially this is a very historic building. Uh, you know, I, and this might be something that the applicant, I know they want to speak to it, um. They included some, uh, previous, uh, floor plans before there were two additions to this building. And I realized today that we got those in paper, but we never received those online. Uh, so if the applicant wants to share that, uh, they can do so. Um, but I, I think basically what they're going to say a- and what we often hear at the Historic Preservation Commission is that, you know, what's being taken from the rear, uh, you know, was an addition. It, it doesn't add to the historic fabric of the building. Uh, it might even benefit the, uh, or I guess it, it wouldn't necessarily benefit the historic character because something else is going there, um. But, you know, i- it would go through that process too for the demo permit, uh, to your point about, um, being able to see it. I mean, that's something that the HPC would certainly comment on in their report to you. Um, if this were a, uh, app, of, you know, full application, and I'm sure they're going to comment on it if it goes for a concept review as well. Right now, uh, with, uh, this sketch kind of being the only sort of visual, uh, we're seeing, um, you know, i- it's kind of hard to tell, uh, what, you know, full impact might be there, but I'm sure that's something that if this board comes to a consensus, um, you know, now would be a great time to, to let the applicant know.
Yeah, I, I'm interested in also, and I, I, I think we can leave this for HPC, but, uh, since Julie is our HPC rep, I'm interested, wh- what was there at the time that it was designated historic, whether the, the parts of the building that are being proposed to be removed were there when the designation was made, and doesn't that mean that they are historic by designation? I'd also point out that, um, you know, I've done quite a bit of reading about the, the district and, underneath this, uh, according to the descendants of people who grew up in Jug Town, um, this was a stop on the Underground Railroad. Um, and specifically, this, uh, this house has what's believed to be the last existing tunnel underneath of it where, where, uh, slaves were, um, where slaves stayed on their way to freedom. So I expect that HPC will give it a, a full review, but I'm, I'm just interested in when the designation was made and whether the structures that are, the parts of the structures that are being called for removal were there when the designation was made.
Yeah, and I'll let the applicant address that, uh, but I want to address your other question first. What we have seen in the other projects has been what you can see from the street, uh, in terms of building retention. But, you know, you bring up a great point that because it's a corner lot and it has the two frontages, um, we as staff are kind of, you know, uh, wondering that ourselves because the AHO two intention is for the streetscape on Nassau Street, is what it says. Um, you know, preserving that. Um, so then the question becomes, you know, is it purely from if you're standing in front of Nassau Street, or is it anything that could be seen from the street should be retained? Um, a- and that's something, you know, I think we as staff, uh, would like to hear the board's input on, uh, too, a- and ultimately signal, you know, for the longer term, uh, how you view this.
Yeah, that i- that is an interesting question. Um, I, I know that the, a building across Harrison Street from this structure, which is Katie Eastridge Design, um, building, dark gray in color, um, has, um, sort of a, a, a back frontage as well as a front, you know, the, a basically a view from Harrison Street that is, um, you know, very nice, uh, as well as the view from, um, uh, uh, of course, from Nassau Street. So, and, and I'm sure that the property was always that way. I think it was a, it was a home, um. Anyway, um, uh, Mr. Bodigheimer, sorry to jump in ahead of you there. I, I saw your hand up and then I didn't see it, and now I see it again.
I, I just, uh, I guess I, uh, I sort of a, a question of fact about the, the addition is the, um, the addition, the portion of the building that has the Connect One Bank Private Client Office sign. Is that part of the, is that, is that the addition to which, uh, Mr. Quinn was, uh, referring?
Uh, from what, the short answer is yes, um. And from what I've seen, there have been two additions, but, uh, like I said, uh, hopefully the applicant can can bring up those digital images that, that we were not able to put online.
Yeah, I think that's a great segue, actually.
The point, the point being that, uh, that that addition would obscure the Western face of the, the structure that was originally the historic structure that is being, you know, is, is, you know, the item of concern. Doesn't say, you can see the historic, the, the, the face of the historic structure from Nassau. You can't see it from Harrison because it's already been obscured by an, by an addition. That, I'm just trying to understand that.
I would love to hear the applicant's presentation. This feels like deliberation.
Yeah, I, I do think that it, um.
Actually, it's a question for professionals, which is what we were, I, I mean, we were veering into discussion, but I believe it was board questions.
I've just heard things referred to, and I'm trying to clarify in my mind.
No, and I, and I want to clarify the point that, that you questioned is I, I want to know what the significance is of the back of the building and and how it, how it relates to the notion that historic structures need to be visible from the streetscape.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Capizoli.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to ask, uh, maybe Jerry is the person, um, if there should be a conflict between the historic, um, ordinance and the overlay. What has precedence? I mean, what, what's rule, what governs this?
Yeah, I, I think the historic, historic ordinance would govern.
Can I, uh?
Okay.
Because it's more specif- it's more specifically geared into, um, the, the sites, uh, that, that it applies to. And, uh, and here, you know, the age, the various AHO zones are fairly broad in scope. Oh, and Derek.
Mister. Mister Bridger had, I'm sorry, Jerry, were you done?
No, I was just saying, uh, Derek might have a different point of view.
Yeah.
No, I, I just wanted to add on to that, um, that the HPC does their report, and if they have conditions that the board wants to disregard or overrule, then the board has to give reasons. That's in the HPC, uh, section of the code. So the, the planning board or the zoning board can make, do, make their own decision and disregard the HPC's, um, recommendations, but they need to give reasons to do that. So. Thanks.
That's great. That's good context. Thank you. Um, well, I'm sure this will get a thorough review by, um, HPC, and I think with that, it would be a good idea to hear from the applicant. Um, I see Mr. Tar here and also Mr. Barsky. Um, Mr. Tar, do you want to, do you want to start?
Thank you.
And, and, and if you have any other folks here that you would want to call on tonight, um, I know it's a, a concept review, but I think still we should swear people in unless Jerry thinks we shouldn't.
Sure. The only other person who's going to speak is Marina Rubina, and she's here, and she and Daniel Barsky could both be sworn.
Yeah, and, and traditionally, we have sworn people in for during, during concept reviews. I don't think it's mandatory, but it, it, we, we found that it, it, it's, it's advisable. So why don't I swear both in right now? If both, um, Mr. Barsky and Ms. Rubina can raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
I do.
I saw it's one or affirm. Please say your full name for the record and spell your last name. For either, both of you. Daniel, why don't you start?
Daniel Barsky, B-A-R-S-K-Y.
Thank you.
Marina Rubina, R-U-B-I-N-A.
Thank you.
W- what we've got is a, uh, series of PowerPoint slides, some of which Marina is going to talk about and some of which Daniel will speak to. So if, uh, with the board's permission, we'll just go ahead with that.
Um, sure. I, I would like to have a sense of how long you expect to take with your presentation.
Twenty minutes maybe.
I'm sorry.
Fifteen minutes, maybe fifteen to twenty minutes.
Sounds great. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Uh, Marina, why don't you share the screen and get started, and then I'll, I'll swap in after you're ready.
Awesome. Um, are you guys able to see the presentation?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Awesome. This is great. Um, thank you so much for having us. We are, um, really grateful for our municipal staff to, um, have us come here and, um, talk about this project, um, as Justin stole some of my show already. This is in the Affordable Housing Overlay Two, and it's the first project to be an overlay two, so it's important to talk through and, um, refresh our memory of why AHO two was created and, um, my understanding from the third round, um, housing plan is that there's a giant need for affordable housing, um, in our town, and namely, there's a hundred and ninety-six units of um, unmet need from previous rounds, and it's, um, really important to, um, do projects like this in order to meet the great need for housing that we have. Um, in this, again, Justin already stole my show, um, but this is the overlay zone two, and, uh, this shows the corner where the project is located, and we're right here, um, in sort of the, the core of it. Um, and then these are the drawings that unfortunately were not distributed to you guys, which, uh, were submitted in paper, but we're not able to be loaded on the website. But, um, so these are existing floor plans of the existing building as it is today, um, that, um, Daniel inherited from the previous owner. So as you could see, we didn't generate these drawings. These are the existing conditions from um, prior owner, and you could see even in the wall thickness where the historic building is. And then these, um, surrounding areas with the sort of interesting curved, um, not exactly sure how to describe this, uh, bathroom entry is the addition that faces the parking lot. So this is the, uh, this bottom portion here is Nassau Street, and this is Harrison. Um, and then the same occurs on the second floor where there's a stair along the, the historic building, and then this is an addition. There are two balconies and little bathroom, um, kitchenette here in the center with the stair. Um, and then, um, we took some photographs to, um, get you oriented around the building. So this is along Nassau Street. So you could see this is the, um, historic building here over on the corner, and then there's this recessed balcony, and then the, um, previously done addition that was shown in the floor plans. And then we'll slowly kind of walk around the corner where this is from the corner. Again, you could see the, the L-shaped, I would characterize it as an L-shaped, um, historic building where this addition uh, really builds the Nassau Street frontage. And as we continue going around the corner, again, we see the closest portion is the, um, historic building, and then this is the addition. And then lastly, this is the view from the parking lot. So this facade and this facade are facing Harrison, and then this, um, three little houses, not sure how to describe it, are facing the parking lot. And, um, that's that curved entry with two bathrooms over here, a bathroom and kitchenette upstairs. Um, and this is going to our, uh, proposed plan where we're highlighting the areas where in yellow are the portions of the building that are being retained, and then this red portion here is the proposed, um, removed portion, as I described, with the, um, bathrooms and the existing stair in order to include a new stair. Uh, new stair needs to be a different size than the current stair, so we need more room to accommodate that. Uh, so no changes are proposed on the Nassau Street portion of the building, and we were careful to maintain the portion of the building that faces the street. So the portion that's being removed is the portion that's facing the parking lot. Um, am I describing this correctly, Daniel?
You know, I, I, I think we've given an accurate portrayal.
Yep, so I think that, that's the plan. Uh, so then, um, again, to get you oriented, this is Nassau Street, this is Harrison. And then where the current parking lot is relocated, um, the, the parking lot will continue in a new configuration. Uh, we have since, um, I got, um, a consultation from our, um, civil engineer who helped us confirm um, our parking layout, our wheelchair-accessible stalls, and just to go back and, um, confirm that we are, um, here for a concept review. So these are schematic drawings. They're not fully engineered, and we're looking for your, um, feedback, and, um, I think one of the questions was about, um, site circulation. So we expect the entry to the parking lot be more or less, it's a little bit shifted north, but basically in the same location of where it is right now. And then on the side that's closer to the building will be located, um, the wheelchair-accessible stall and bicycle parking, um, underneath the building. There would be a new elevator, obviously, to create access to upstairs units. And then the opposite side will be the, um, the location of parking approximately where it is today. Uh, I'm trying to remember, uh, yeah, we'll talk about the, the fence question later. Um, and I think, Daniel, I will pass it on to you, right?
Sure. Thank you, Marina. Uh, good evening, everybody. And, um, so thanks, Marina, for putting the site in the building context. I mean, I think it's important, um, uh, to note that the front-facing facade of Nassau Street, historical and otherwise, is being preserved. And that all the frontage along Harrison is, this void in the middle that, uh, in red, that's only visible from the parking lot, is proposed to be demolished, but has no historical contribution. Um, it's an addition that was done in the seventies or eighties, um. And on the following slides, uh, I'm going to kind of talk about some more technical details and address the staff comments, um, that Justin has brought up, um, through the course of his testimony. So, um, uh, to address the first question is the So to address the first question is the usage of the ground floor. So right now we're proposing a little over eight hundred square feet of office on the first floor. That's access off Nassau Street. And the remainder of the space is divided up between some tenant storage and common area. In section, section fifteen of the AH O two, common rooms slash areas, including for meetings, recreation, laundry, and storage, as long as well as maintenance of storage are permitted accessory accessory use. And our design team and legal counsel feel that this is an appropriate implementation of the ordinance and adds to the overall functionality of the proposed building in creating a shared amenity for the neighbors. We anticipate that the tenants may want to use, I mean, obviously, the storage space for obvious reasons, and the common area maybe to work out of sometimes to get, you know, a lot of people working from home to have a a change of scenery or, you know, have some type of event or a birthday party. You know, either way, we feel that it's an appropriate use for the building, and it would be a nice amenity for the building as well. If you can go to the next slide, Marina. So going into some more technical details, the proposed site is conforming with all bulk requirements except the following. So we'll start with the easiest, the simplest one is the requirement for the front yard setback where zero feet minimum or ten feet maximum is required. However, as indicated by Justin, the AH O two overlay also indicates that the front facade of the building should be preserved. The existing building currently sits fourteen feet back from Nassau Street, so it's not between zero and ten, and it triggers a front yard variance. You know, due to the original building's historical relevance and the prominent transit corridor, we are requesting a variance for front yard setback. Since both preserving the street facing facade of the building and meeting the front yard setback, it's just not possible. We feel that out of the two, it's more important to preserve the facade facing Nassau Street, so we are requesting a front yard variance setback. The other variances are related to parking. So eighteen spaces are required and eighteen spaces are proposed. However, there is one stacked parking space and variances for the width of parking stalls. We do get three stalls that do conform because you're permitted for compact spaces, but the remainder are between eight and eight and a half feet, and they would require variance for the width of the stall. Before I go and show you illustrations more in depth, our thought was the stack parking would be dedicated for the office. You know, it doesn't, it's not really viable for one tenant to park behind another. But for the office, which does require some parking, it does make sense to have have stacked parking, considering they're working in the same office. They know who comes in earlier, who leaves later. And it's easy for them to maneuver the cars if need be. And regarding the stall width specifically, you know, this is a more urban living scenario. And usually with more urban living, there are more urban cars and more compact cars. So we do feel it's appropriate to ask for variance for the width of the stalls. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the following slides. You can go to the next slide, Marina. I just want to cut in before we go further about parking, about impervious coverage. So the layers of color in cayenne and green, they show the addition and elimination of impervious surface. Essentially, the net effect is that only five hundred fifty square feet of additional impervious is proposed. More importantly, less than eighty percent of impervious coverage is proposed, which is the requirement in the AH O two. So it does meet the requirement for impervious coverage. But I do think it's important to note that the the impact on impervious on a site like this is really inconsequential, only five hundred fifty square feet. You know, engineering really only requires stormwater if there's an additional, in addition of four hundred square feet. Of course, I'm sure the municipal engineers will want some stormwater design here, and we'll work with them to that end. You know, for water conveyance and some management if necessary. But just wanted to illustrate that, you know, currently there's a big parking lot in the back in the existing building. And our proposal is not to increase increase impervious by a whole lot. If you can go to the next slide, Marina. So going back to parking, Marina mentioned on the previous slides, you can see the two stacked spots that will be for the office. Along the north side are eight foot stalls. And along the building is the handicap stall, the striping, and eight and a half foot stalls. Some of these eight foot stalls can go towards a compact car provision, and the rest would require variance. Well, I'll take a moment here to address a couple of the couple other of the staff comments. So staff has asked to talk about access to the parking area of the Wicker Building, which is along Nassau Street going towards Kingston. So currently, we have no legal obligation to provide access to our property as no easement exists. We're currently in a month month lease. We've personally reached out to the manager of Wicker. We haven't heard a response yet, though I'm sure we will in the future. But the important thing is that we've designed the the parking arrangement and the drive aisle so as to permit access in the future. So, you know, if Wicker, you know, sees a need to reach out to us and arrange some type of easement, we have designed the parking aisle in the building to accommodate for that, though currently at the moment, there's no legal obligation to do so. If you can go to the next slide, Marina. Oh, excuse me. Actually, stay on this slide for one moment.
Can you talk about the wall?
Yeah, let's talk about that. So staff's memo also mentions section B seventeen A dash three ninety, which talks about parking lots of more than ten spaces. That's us. We have eighteen spaces. And it says a planting strip of at least four feet should be installed unless modified or waived by the board in areas bordering parking lots with ten or more spaces or substituted by a screening wall or fence. So in this case, directly to the north of us is the foot and ankle doctor with the huge parking lot, more than ten spaces. There's also this easement that Marina is highlighting here, which is a vehicular easement for access to whole earth. I mean, that easement is never going to go away. And so what we're proposing is a screening wall or a fence instead of the four foot planting strip as the planting strip likely won't be viable in that location, considering we won't get enough sun and rain. You know, the parking lot is currently where it is anyway. And then with the foot and ankle doctors, the parking lot and the easement there, we do feel that's appropriate. And lastly, I'd like to address the staff comment about garbage pickup and tenant move in and move out. So we're proposing that a private hauler come to pick up garbage on specific days and times where traffic is at a minimum and it doesn't impact the traffic situation. You know, the same for tenant move in and move out to coordinate it on days and times that, you know, not during school times, not during rush hour times. And we anticipate, you know, because they're mostly one and two bedroom units, that we're not going to have a need for big moving trucks. Rather, they're going to be moving vans, which can park in the parking area during those arranged times. Next slide, Marina. So lastly, I wanted just to bring up the ordinance section from Princeton, section ten B three three six, which says developer may request and the approving authority may grant additional incentive incentives for the production of affordable housing, including increased density and or a reduction in upstream parking spaces otherwise required. So, you know, in our case, we're actually not looking for a reduction in the amount of parking required. Eighteen spaces are required. We're providing eighteen spaces. We're looking for a couple of small variances around parking with the one stacked stall and the width of the parking stalls. But the proposed building is conforming in in all their bulk requirements. And we feel that it's appropriate that instead of having the same size building with fifteen units, let's say, that are bigger. They're three bedroom units with one less affordable. We're proposing twenty smaller units with minor parking variances and additional affordable. And, you know, the ordinance calls for a formula for parking requirement based on per unit. But in all reality, fifteen three bedrooms would likely exceed the parking demand of twenty smaller units. You know, we know from our experiences owning other buildings in town. For example, we have a building on Spruce Street. There's ten one bedroom apartments, and there's a twenty space parking lot. Out of the twenty spaces we rent, we provide five spaces out of the ten one bedroom units. There's a lot of the one bedroom units downtown, really, they don't have a car, they don't need parking. On the other hand, in our, you know, in the luxury rental units that are three or four bedrooms, most people have more than one car. They have, we'll say on average, one and a half to two. So while the it is a variance according to the ordinance, we feel in all reality that the parking demand actually will be less with the layout that we have now with the two bedroom and one bedroom units. And, you know, we know that the planning board in the past has been open to granting variances around parking. You know, one that comes to mind is the Nelson Glass Building, you know, approved a couple of years ago from the planning board. You know, they have five or six stacked parking spaces. The width of the spaces, the depth of the spaces, the setback of the spaces to the property line, you know, in this kind of more urban downtown area, we do feel that it's appropriate. We feel that it makes sense. You know, staff has encouraged us, and we're happy to come in front of the planning board for concept to hear your guys comments. You know, before we get too far with technical design. And you know, we'd like, you know, Marina's going to wrap up the presentation. She's going to show you, you know, layouts that we have in mind and some inspiration. But we're hoping to hear some comments from you guys about, you know, if there's some agreement on, yeah, you know, makes sense to have these small parking variances, but likely less parking demand in all reality. And there is a, there is a demand in Princeton for smaller units. So a lot of the overlay stuff that we've seen are luxury units. They're bigger, they're more expensive. And I think we like to try to provide this middle of the road, you know, one to two bedroom units that are more desirable in this area. So Marina, if you can wrap up the last couple of slides, and then we'll we'll hear comments from the planning board. Thank you.
Absolutely. So again, to go back to our schematic plans, we do have a combination of one bedrooms and two bedrooms and the three bedroom apartment. Mostly, the units are not too small, but pretty compact. And we hope that this is not exactly the idea that these would be luxury units. The concept here is it's a pretty major road with loud cars going by. So these are budget apartments. So these floor plans you have in your packets. And then to wrap up, there's been, okay, don't laugh, but there's been a lot of discussion in terms of new buildings being Frankensteins or new buildings being big fish ate little fish. So we are hoping to get some guidance from you guys of what would be appropriate. And we've been thinking of what what would be an appropriate way of putting a new building that is larger next to a smaller historic building. And this kind of an arrangement where you have a existing building in a very historic context and a more contemporary new building being adjacent to it, it it's sort of dynamically. So we're hoping not for Frankenstein. We're hoping for an Italian mountain town concept. But very much looking for your guidance. That's why the sketch is so sketchy because we didn't want to go too far down into design. And and as you could see, this building floor plan has no windows because there's no architecture yet. So we hope to get guidance from you guys on the questions that Daniel brought up. And also on what would you like to see this look and feel and what would be appropriate in terms of how to make these buildings work together nicely. So at this point, would it be appropriate for me to stop sharing screen and and make room for discussion?
Yes, okay. Yeah, that would be great, Ms. Rubina. And if anybody wants you to put an image back up, I'm sure they will ask.
Yeah, just let me know, and I'll try to put it back up the best I can.
Mr. Cohen, get us started.
The reference to Frankenstein buildings, I consider to be my cue. Yeah. So I do want to say that, you know, I really like the the reference to the the Italian mountain town, that kind of look of cascading buildings, you know, building in front being lower, buildings in in back being higher. I do think that right now, although it's a little hard to tell because we don't have much 3D, that the plans look like the addition is going to be pretty monolithic. And the front building has a scale to the articulation that is missing from the back building. And I think that the two, they don't have to stylistically be the same, but I think in terms of the scale of how the massing breaks down, it would really be more successful if the rear, you know, if the new addition could have some articulation on the same general scale of the existing building in front. I'm not talking about height. I'm talking about. Marina knows that's what I'm talking.
Okay, yes, I think that that's absolutely. So at the moment, it's not exactly a building. It's a box. But it it needs to be turned into a building, and that we're looking for those suggestions. So articulation that that is, and then we were, as as the sketch suggests, is sort of, we were hoping for the sort of layering approach to kind of, it's not like, you know, here's a building and a little one, but it's more like step up to it.
Right.
That's the hope.
Which I do, which I do like. I wanted to also respond to, I I generally don't have a problem with the parking variances. I do have concern about the loss of commercial space in the existing building on the ground floor. I I really appreciated Justin's comment on that in the memo. The idea of these overlays really was to maintain a mixed use character with commercial on the ground floor, residential above. You know, numbers of the projects that we've seen so far really have almost all residential accessory use on the first floor. But on Tulane Street, that street wasn't really a commercial street to begin with. The the project at one ninety-five Nassau, the the buildings running on Nassau really were preserved in their entirety, including the the commercial uses. So I think this is a bit of a departure in converting existing commercially used to residential accessory use. And I do think that it's, I mean, it may not be disallowed the way the ordinance is written, but it is contrary to the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish when we drafted it. So those are my major reactions. I'd like to let other board members speak as well.
Thanks, David. Zenon, Texarney?
Yeah, so I was a little nervous at first, kind of looking at it. But I mean, after you've you've explained, you know, what you plan to do, I I feel pretty good about what you're proposing. I mean, I think that I think that the fact that you're preserving, you know, pretty much the the most of the existing building. Um, is is really good, um, and that the fact that you're. You're developing a a surface parking lot and turning it into housing, I think is is great and 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 it's a great location as well. Um, I think that as far as the design is concerned. Um, I I think that, I I mean, I like the idea of sort of um having some sort of connection and maybe somewhat be. Stylistically similar, but I also feel like we have to be careful not to like make it like. Um, you know, fake old in a sense, if you know what I mean. And I think that there's a way to to do it right, and I think that actually what I was thinking about as as sort of a good example. Is the um, the new campus, residential campus um that was built uh on the university. The the Yay College and then the, what's it called, the new.
Oh, I love those, I know what the one you mean, yeah.
New new uh College West, yeah, and actually, um, I have to say, um, that those um, those. Um, buildings actually just got an award um for um great design and. You know, we we kind of um as a planning board didn't pick that one a little bit, so I have to say that we had had a say in that design, so I think we we deserve a little bit of credit. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think that it that that those buildings did a great job at sort of kind of blending in with the. Neo Gothic uh traditional architecture of the the university and also kind of like a simple modern look. And I think that, you know, you could potentially do something similar, I mean, it's a different architecture style for sure, but um. You know, just kind of the idea of like kind of blending modern with like kind of um historic building. I I think that also another a way to potentially approach the whole entire Frankenstein. Um, issue is to try to kind of maybe separate the buildings a little bit more, I mean stylistically. So kind of make it seem like it's um you're not just one big building. Um, and kind of make it kind of two issue different buildings, like, you know, they they just happen to be close together, I mean, they might be connected, but. You know, um, they they could essentially be have their distinct characteristics. So those are some of my thoughts, I and you know, I I don't, I don't think we really need to get into um kind of sustainability stuff, but I'm assuming that. You know, everything's gonna be nice and green as well in terms of architecture and energy efficiency and whatnot, so.
Goes without saying, yep.
Um, thanks, Mr. Tex Arnie, um Julie Capizoli and then Alvin McGowan.
Hi, um, you know, I know we'll get to talk at HBC, but um a couple of things I thought of. Um, as Zenon was saying, um. Fake historic is, you know, kind of makes me cringe, it's uh. The Secretary of the Interior Standards always likes the delineation between what is really historic and what isn't. Now, on the front of Nassau Street, they didn't do that, I mean, they kind of faked it, right? But we're so used to that, so whatever, um. The concerns I have are besides the massing, which I think is the most important point, um, the fenestration. And then the um, the kind of materials that you wanna use, the um. The outer material, the roofing, um, if somehow there can be some kind of. A harmonious coexistence between um. The historic buildings and whatever's proposed. Uh, so that there isn't a big shocking contrast, maybe. Um. That's always a good thing.
Great, yeah, it seems like in that um Italian mountain town tradition, it's. The materials are similar, the style is different and that allows it to. Sort of be together, but at the same time not be faking something.
Mm-hmm, I, no, I think that's that's a good path.
No. And I think what Zenon was saying about the um, the new college, the fact that it has um sort of good materials. It allows it to talk to the other other places, okay. Making notes, hold on.
Good, we like notes, anything else, anything else, Julie?
Uh, those, no, I think we have covered the big ones.
Okay, so Zenon, your hand is still up, uh, can you lower your hand? That'd be great, okay, uh, Mr. McGowan and then Nat Bodikheimer.
Purely a a comment, and the one thing that does strike me about this is that corner. Where this building is going in and out is really, traffic is really tight. Um, uh, there's there are cars that will. I I can't think what the what the street is. If below that, I'm not talking about Nassau Street, but there's a light that that if you go past. Um, the the fire station on North Harrison, I mean, traffic gets backed up there. That all the way, only that far. Uh, it's and it's it's really seems it's really narrow when when uh cars are coming in and out, particularly of of that. Of that of the medical office there, now, I don't know what you're gonna be able to do, I don't know if you can. But I I I just wanna point out, that's an observation, it seems like that, that is something you. Somehow you want it, you might wanna think about if you can do something about it.
Um, Ma- Marina, can you pull up your uh drawing of the parking lot? So I I think we kind of, we started talking about that with our civil engineer. Um, so what we're proposing is currently people come. Out of the parking lot and make a left on Harrison and sometimes I have backup traffic trying to squeeze in there. And um obviously, we'll talk with the municipal professionals about their take on it, but we were suggesting that a right hand turn only. Out of the parking lot makes sense. Um, so that um as to eliminate traffic that gets backed up down Harrison towards the shopping center. Um, you know, from briefly, that talking about our civil engineer, that's one of the first things he mentioned, I mean, that sounds like. Um, an improvement from what's currently there and we can continue to explore. Uh, you know, what other options can be taken to make the traffic situation better. Uh, I'll tell you now that, you know, with the office right now, people come in and out a lot more often than I would think residential units come in and out. Um, but a lot of them are making a left onto Harrison, um, and I think with this. Reararrangement, it would be an improvement and we'll continue to look forward, like look into what else we can do to. Make the traffic situation better there. Thanks, Marina.
Should I take down the?
Yeah, I think you're.
Yeah, yeah, excellent.
Um, great, uh, Mr. Bodikheimer and then Justin Lesko.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, um, so. Uh, I just was say, you know, generally positive of and. You know, very supportive of 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 the approach and agree with the premise. Uh, that this is an important way to uh to provide needed housing in the community. Uh, and in an appropriate location. Uh, to the concerns about whether it is. Overweighted towards residential uh versus office, I think, you know, one of the cautions, I guess I would make it the point is, first of all, I'm I'm sensitive to that, of course. Uh, would love to see, uh, you know, more commercial space in the in the town's core. You know, it's, I I I I think the entire office space sector is trying to recalibrate about what the future demand is gonna be and where it's gonna be, that's something that's. That's in flux and and um, you know, I don't see, this is necessarily the place to be looking to. To 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 make up. You know, wha- whatever gap we think there is in. Office space availability in Princeton, I mean, we've already lost a fair amount. In, you know, uh, along Bun Drive, because it just wasn't the demand for that, and now we're looking at structural changes. In the office economy, so I, you know, I just don't. I I I I'm not prepared to make that a short term issue that we should. You know, we should wait to see where the just fall. To the questions about Harrison Street, the Mr. McGowan raised, uh, yeah, I'm I'm I I'm concerned about that side of things as well. And also about car movements, but from a slightly different perspective, I'm 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 thinking much more about pedestrians and the cars. Um, that sidewalk is already really tightly. Uh. Cramped between cars and the side of a building and I I'm just worried about having a an an. A a narrow space. You know, the you look at the the street there and you've got, you know, you've got utility poles in the middle of the sidewalk. Um, there's no shoulder there, the the cars are really cramped up against it, and it's unpleasant to walk along, and so. Anything that can be done as part of the final design to make that sidewalk experience more pleasant for people who are walking. Um. More more separation from traffic, a little bit more, you know, just just, you know, uh, some. Some articulation in the building front, so that there are places, you know, some kind of refuge feeling instead of just, you know, bank wall. And feeling like you're stuck in between cars and that, and as far as the design of the entrance into the parking lot, I would appeal. For our town designers to uh to take advantage. Not to give turning radio that make it possible for cars to turn in or out precipitously. Um, if that is a way to calm traffic and I don't wanna make my personal. Family sorrow, uh, like like my 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 thumb tumping, but our our dog was run over and killed. At a corner two weeks ago while he was on leash in my wife's hands by a car that turned a corner. Uh, and wasn't looking around the street where he was going. Um, this was on the random road and Poe Road in the in the Littlebrook neighborhood and. I say, any opportunity we can take to engineer a corner so the cars have to slow and have to look around the corner before they do anything. It makes things safer for pedestrians, if we say that we care about safety, we're gonna have to build that into everything we do and not to say that we're about safety, so. Um. Uh, you know, I know we're talking about a building mostly, but I really care about the space that people have to use around the building and um. That's something that. I- i- is it, is that's an opportunity to improve with this project, I'd love to see that.
Yeah, we will absolutely work with our municipal officials on. Um, where we would much rather make it pedestrian friendly than car friendly, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's, that is really um, good to hear, Marina, I I go over to that area all the time and um. You know, everybody that's brought up the the tightness and the the scary pedestrian situation is spot on. Um, Mr. Lesko, you had your hand up before, did you, did you mean to lower it? Do you have something to?
Sure, yeah, I'll just make a one or two quick quick clarifications, uh, because I don't wanna talk too much, but Marina, can you pull back up? Um, this slide you were just showing.
I hope so. Yeah.
Okay, so uh there currently is a uh no left turn out of uh. The parking lot, which is very similar to where it is now, um, and actually that left turn lane onto uh, you know, Nassau going towards Kingston. Um, that line extends much further.
Yes.
There's something of like a, almost like a si- uh, you know, like a cycle there. Uh, right turn in, right turn out, and then left turn, um, you know, almost like your own protected turn lane. Um, and it appears that this is gonna keep that consistent, uh, if not move it even further away from the light. Um, so just to clarify that, um, on the vehicles. Uh, and then just lastly, the um, the permitted uses for the ground floor uh. In the AHO uh two are not just office, but also retail sales and services and restaurants.
Great, thank you, thanks for that.
Take this one down.
Yes, thank you.
Jack Taylor and then Phil Chow.
Yeah, let me make what is, to say the least, a layman's comment. I get the logic, the AHO two, I get the logic of how things have been prepared. But I drive by this site in both directions virtually every day. And there isn't a day passing when when I drive by or I turn the corner, I don't take note of the building. And invariably, when I do, I reflect on the fact that it's historical. And that there are tunnels and it plays a special role, so, again, a layman's comment. Any structure for any purpose which overpowers the image concerns me. But I really thought that Zenon's comments in that spirit were relevant. If the building could be appropriately delinked, if you will, and still accomplish the underlying objectives. I would be more comfortable and it seems to me that some of the concerns we've raised might be solved. So I take Zenon's point of view, a delinking standalone building appropriately designed. As David Cohen suggested, that makes more practical sense to me.
Uh, okay, thank you very much, I I, we may be sending. Um, a little bit of mixed signals, I've I've heard some folks um very much uh appreciate the idea of. Just, you know, disconnection or separateness um to the extent possible and others have endorsed the um. Uh, layering uh approach more, so you'll just have to parse that. I mean, it's a, it it it's it's gonna be, it's gonna be a balancing act, obviously, and. And I don't think those things are completely inconsistent with each other, but it'll, it might be um a challenge.
It it's certainly a challenge, but I I think I I hear the concept that. Um, from Zinon, is let me summarize my notes is that it's especially important for stylistic separation. And providing clarity and then uh delinking, right? So that it's very clear that here is one building and although it it sort of. Rises up to the other one, but there's clarity, it's not just like, whoa, you can't tell where one starts and the other one begins. My understanding, am I correctly? Good luck doing it, I don't know.
Julie had interesting thoughts too about materials and vernacular and that kind of thing, so. Um, but moving forward, uh, Mr. Chow and then Mr. O'Donnell and then Mr. Quinn.
Yeah, I I kinda just wanna second Nat's comments about the sidewalk, that that struck me right away, um, when when the the uh. Floor plan was shown that as you walk north on North Harrison, you you encounter that the the tall building. And it's right right up against a sidewalk, so I. Basically, I had the same reaction as Nat, that uh, you you feel it, that the massing is so tall that. Um, you do, you would feel very cramped and and that along that's part of the sidewalk, so. Um, so anything that gives some space and. And not have the walk, the pedestrian feel that they're overwhelmed with a super tall building right on top of them uh would help.
And vulnerable.
Yeah, invulnerable too, yeah, the, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, yeah, I got the very important point about the area of refuge or a place to sort of be for pedestrians. Nat's point, yeah, very well taken, okay.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. O'Donnell and Mr. Quinn and Mr. Bodikheimer again.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much for coming here with the concept plan, it's something that we've been trying to get. Uh, our applicants to do more often, so we really appreciate it. Uh, one thing that I would have liked to have seen uh that wasn't there is some kind of draft or sketch of the back end of the building. That would give me a better sense of, and my specific question is. So how, so the new floors that are being built, how far over the existing parking lot are they going to extend? If at all?
Oops, wrong button, uh, let's go back to the same plan, um, so. Um, you guys can see the plan, right? So here, this line right here is the line of the building above.
Okay.
So if we look at the upper floor plan, you can see that um there's fifteen feet. Separation from the property line at the back to the building.
So you're going to need supports or something in the parking lot itself.
Yep, these little dark columns, yep, that's them.
Okay, all right, um, and you know, I ju- I'm just a little concerned about. Uh, what that's going, you know, what the. With the, with people who are heading south on Harrison Street coming towards Nassau are going to. See, and of course, yeah, I know it's it's early on, it hasn't been designed yet. see. And of course, yeah, I know it's, it's early on. It hasn't been designed yet, but I think it's very important. Yeah, this is really a a key gateway into town. And you know, for people coming in, people going out. Uh, so I, I'd really like you to give some thought as to, as to that as well and try to make it. You know, again, not harmonious, but at least aesthetically, uh, appropriate for the area and for, and for just the concept of Princeton.
Right, right. So I think that, um, yeah, we're gonna shoot for harmonious. Um, one, one thing we have going for us is that there's a little bit of a grade change where this driveway and the Inklaductors parking lot is higher than us. So at least, um, we will have, uh, we have to have a portion of, um, retaining wall there. Uh, so I think that would be helpful. And then, yeah, that's an important facade to design.
Yeah. So thank you very much for, for all this.
Yeah, yeah. We're definitely gonna try to work on that one.
Thanks, Owen. Um, Tim Quinn?
Uh, should I get, yes, okay.
But did we lose Tim? Oh, Tim, you're, you're on mute. There you go.
Now, uh, thanks. Uh, first of all, uh, my condolences to Mr. Bodenheimer for on his, uh, loss of his dog. I'm sure that was terrifying. Uh, and unexpected in, in Littlebrook, which is much quieter than Jug Town. Um, so, um, I think many of us know what it, what it's like to lose a, a dog. And, um, so my condolences. I'm sorry that I cut out. I'm, I'm using a very old uh, Mac Pro that I refuse to let go of. And sometimes it, uh, it gets wonky. Um, I wanted to say that, uh, in the presentation, I was satisfied uh, with the view of the potential view of the historic building um, from Harrison. I do think, and I share the concerns that Mr. Bodenheimer and Mr. Chow articulated about um, pedestrian use. Um, I'm walking there every morning and seeing kids who are riding bikes. Um, who are headed toward JW and the high school and, um, they mostly ride on the sidewalks. Um, they're just not of age where they feel comfortable riding in the street. Um, we don't have a cycling friendly infrastructure on a, on Nassau, which is a state road. So I think anything that can be done, um, I appreciate the comments about this. Um, you know, showing us the Italian hillside shot. I, I think that's gonna be difficult to pull off there because, uh, uh, and I share Mr. Taylor's concerns, which are not. They're not amateur or uninformed because you're a member of this board, that this building is just going to dominate. Um, everything. And I know that it's allowable under the ordinance, so, um, I just think it's too big. And, um, I, I heard the word urban used multiple times by, uh, Mr. Barsky and, and by Ms. Rabina. And, um, this is the, the second part of the name of this section is town. It's not Jug City. So, um, while our town is becoming, um, you know, increasingly urbanized, and I think, I, I think Tulane with its proximity to the other part of Tulane, which has a more urban feel. Um, the buildings that were approved there, and I don't think anyone on our board used those terms. Frankenstein building or the whale swallowing the fish. Councilman Cohen?
David's, David's copying to it. Yeah.
Wow.
It's okay. Well, let's just.
I'll move on. I, I, obviously my memory is failing me. Uh, but I just wanna point out that those are, those are two different neighborhoods. Um, Jug Town is a town. Um, and I, I think that, um, I just think it's a little bit, um, too big. And I think it will dominate the, uh, the structure. And again, I, until it's built, I think I'll, I'll reserve final judgment on this question. There's a pub in Philadelphia, which is my, my hometown, uh, called Maces Crossing. It's on the Benjamin Franklin Boulevard. And if you Google it, you'll see that it's a colonial tavern that was preserved and it has a skyscraper behind it. Um, while walking on the streetscape, I'm kind of fond of it because I like the juxtaposition. Uh, and I'm not sure that I will be with, with this in when I'm walking down Nassau, but, um, I, I, I like the fact that the plan is not to build luxury apartments. Um, I think affordability is a relative term and I applaud anything that builds capital A affordable housing and makes, um, more affordable rentals. Um, so I, I know I'm rambling. Uh, I didn't hear parts of the discussion. I thank you for listening. Uh, and I'm, I'm relieved that, um, parts of what were the addition to the historic structure in the historic district are, are being retained. So thank you.
Um, thank you. And if you would at all possibly send a link or a picture to the building that you like in Philadelphia, that would be really helpful.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Bodigheimer and then Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a, a, just a very quick point about, uh, historic preservation and historic context. I think one of the things that is that, that will definitely be retained. Uh, and that is a marker of the historic character of this intersection is the intersection geometry, which is tight, the same way it is in the center of Kingston. And it is, I mean, you feel the historicity of it. Because it's not a giant intersection with everything set far back. You know it's historic because things are right at the corner and because you're worried about trucks driving into the buildings. Uh, so, you know, I just, I just wanted to say that, you know, whatever happens on the site, you're not, that, that, that center organizing framework is always gonna be there. And it's not just this building, but it's the juxtaposition of the buildings on all four corners that establishes that it's a historic place and that, you know, that's something that is not gonna be lost, no matter what happens.
Thank you. Good point. Um, Mr. Cohen.
So I just wanted to make one, um, I hope constructive comment about the pedestrian experience, which is that, you know, if a wall that right now is right against the sidewalk could move a couple of feet, I think that would do a lot to alleviate some of the concerns. I know that that's a challenge because the parking spaces are already substandard in width. So what I wanted to put out there was that if there were to be one or two additional, um, uh, stacked parking spaces in order to get that wall a little further away, it's another variance, but I would certainly be supportive of that. Um, to, to, to just give that couple of extra feet. The other comment I wanted to make was I, I just wanted to, and this is almost more for my colleagues on the board rather than for Marina, because I, I know that she gets this. But I don't think that there's anything inconsistent really with what I've been saying about the aesthetics and what Zenon, you know, and Julie were saying about the aesthetics. I think that, um, it's not important, you know, that these two buildings look alike. But the separation of them to, to try and create a little distance, it's also not appropriate for them to be entirely not acknowledging each other. Okay. So the new and the old should be in conversation with each other. That's what I'm looking for is, that was missing, uh, in the Frankenstein building. Which, uh, I, I, I'm surprised Tim doesn't remember me saying that. I've been, not only do I remember saying it, but I've been reminded, uh, many, many times that I said it. But, um, you know, in my defense, the, the, uh, designer there had been given several opportunities, both in concept or, or in sprab review and in HPC review to, um, fix what was wrong with the design. And he ignored uh, both of those boards in his, uh, final submission. So, uh, I don't lose my temper very often, but I did on that occasion. So.
Thanks, David.
So David, did I understand correctly that if, um, accommodations for, uh, pedestrian friendly facade triggered some form of additional variants that it seems that the board would look favorably onto that in my.
Obviously, I can't speak for other members of the board. I'm just saying that I would be favorably inclined to, um, look at other parking variances, um, that would enable that.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Um, as would I. Uh, I just have a, a few things that I will be really interested to see um, when you come back. I assume you'll be back. Um, and, and the first has to do with the porosity of the site. I, I guess in a couple of different ways, one being, um, its connections with neighboring properties, not just, um, the Whitekirt Realty parking connection. I assume that'll somehow be addressed. Um, but safe pedestrian access, you know, ma- maybe the safest, maybe what you're counting on is o- only, um, you know, pedestrians coming out the front door, meaning onto Nassau Street and walking right or left and, and proceeding from there. But I'm thinking about linkages, um, that could connect them with, um, safely with the businesses like, um, Whole Earth, uh, maybe through a sort of, um, you know, back, um, sidewalk there. It, for people who are trying to access, um, Whole Earth from, uh, from Harrison, i- it's really dangerous if you're on foot. And, um, of course, people are turning into that back driveway all the time. Cause I think that probably more people access the property that way than off of Nassau Street, although I couldn't swear to that. Um, and right now this property is, is completely separated from all the um, properties around it. I, I don't know um, the right way to, to sort of open it up. Um, maybe, maybe you could have ingress and egress to the garage, both from Harrison and from sort of, um, that other access driveway. I, I don't know. Maybe that would be impossible because of the easement, but, um, but for cars and bikes and people, just to sort of the, the connections with the neighboring properties is something I'd, I'd be interested to see how you would approach that. And and the other porosity question has to do with the absorbency of the site. Um, and, um, I think that by, I think that the, the pervious cover that we're losing, um, um, between what is now the parking lot and the access driveway, the back driveway, um, uh, into the Whole Earth Center parking lot. There's a, a line of pretty big trees there and other vegetation. And I, I gather from the plan that that will all be gone and you would replace it with a big wall. And, um, and so I'm wondering how you might approach greening this site even as you add this, this, um, level of density. And I do, by the way, like the, the notion of more smaller units. Um, that's something that Mr. Barsky asked about early on, um, and the, the notion of budget apartments, whether or not, uh, whether or not they're, um, you know, fall under the COA guidelines, um. Uh, but I'm thinking about what those folks look out their windows at. And, and it won't, and it won't be trees. The roof of the, of either a wall or the roof of the, it, as, as I understand it, and maybe I'm misunderstanding it. But that's, I, I'm interested in sort of the, the greening of the site, how you might go about that. Maybe with, um, stacking another few, um, parking spaces. You can have space in that sort of semi outside area beyond the roof line to put in some trees between, um, parking spaces. I don't know.
One option that we did look at is we're providing a twenty-four inch drive aisle. I'm sorry, twenty-four, twenty-four foot drive aisle. In the past, twenty foot drive aisles have been allowed. So if there would be favorable outlook on that, that
Yeah.
if, if, you know, we're always concerned where, uh, it, it's sort of a given that, you know, we've gotta have twenty-four feet. But in reality, with smaller cars, if there would be appetite or staff would feel comfortable saying, you know, if we had twenty feet, we would be totally fine.
Yeah, and I, I'm glad you brought that up because with eight foot wide, potentially eight foot wide parking spaces, um, you are not gonna have pickups and SUVs in there. I mean, that, that's a small space. Um, but a good bit smaller, I think than, you know, than you find in the typical surface parking lot. And, um, that's totally fine with me, but that argues for, I think, or I would say, and that argues for the practicality of narrower drive aisles like you're suggesting might be. Um, built into the plan so that you could add more trees, you know, s- some trees and vegetation to the outside area that people would be able to see from their windows.
Right. And we, we would be thrilled to work with our professionals to see if there's a, a way to do that. If, if you guys feel that's a good direction, I think from our standpoint, less impervious coverage is the absolute. We don't need to create any impervious coverage. Yeah.
Uh, I think Marina, it's safe to say that we should work with municipal staff to make sure that this is, that this is like actually gonna work, um, so that it's practical, logical, and at the same time.
Including the fire official and, and the engineering officer.
Yeah, right. To get everyone on board to make sure that, hey, this actually works from a logistical standpoint. But hearing from the board, parking is less of a concern as opposed to pedestrian circulation, safety and like adding some more green elements. So I think we can consider that when moving forward with municipal staff. Um, you know, how are we gonna, how can we best design this to accommodate both? And come back with like a formal application to best address some of the concerns, which sounds like, you know, and, and I'm actually in agreement with that parking is less of a concern than the other issues we've heard here. Um, you know, Roman and I know through our experiences that, uh, out of the ten one bedroom units, half won't have parking, will not have cars. This is for a fact. We know that from our other rentals. You know, um, and people who do have cars, uh, very, no one's driving in with a Ford F-250. You know, um, people are gonna be having small compact cars. So let's see where we can wiggle and make sure it's safe to get in and out of the building, safe for pedestrians. Um, and, and work with municipal staff to that end. So I think we've heard a lot from the board members, which is very helpful to that end.
Um, well, a- and thanks for sharing your experience with the parking requirements because parking needs. Well, and and thanks for sharing your experience with the parking requirements because parking needs of your tenants, because that's really good for us to know. A couple of other quick things. How tall is the existing building? The the historic building on the corner? You know,
We will have
I'm 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 trying to get at the the how much higher, because that 45 feet I know is the limit. And the existing building is a two story building, but it's up a little bit off of grade. And I'm just curious as as to whether you know how tall it is.
I don't know off the top of my head, but
Okay, all right.
Our next submission, we will absolutely take measurements and
Sure.
back here and document.
Yep, not a big deal. My last
I don't want to misrepresent something I'm not one of
Thanks. My last comment has to do with bike parking and storage and and just to encourage you to provide ample spaces for bike charging. I I've noticed in my neighborhood, a lot, a lot more electric bikes than I used to see. Just it's really remarkable how many, how many more. And so those electric bikes need need places to charge other than up in people's rooms, bikes and scooters, so that they don't start fires.
Very good point.
And that's all, that's all for me. Any other comments from Ms. Texarney?
Yeah, I mean, as much as you can, I know that in the past, you've provided nice renderings of of what you're proposing. But, you know, if you come for full review, it'd be good to have some some renderings of, you know, entry, like as you go up, you know, Harrison, you know, from going into town or potentially leaving town, you know, along the side. I also, I think it will be interesting to see how the entrance to kind of the new part will look. Because I I mean, I think it'll be interesting to see how the whole structure looks. But, you know, right now, you know, I've been thinking it's it's really going to be, you know, very much like the entrance being like a to to the parking lot. And so I I mean, I'm curious how the the actual, you know, you know, entrance to like walking into the building will look. So if you can provide that view.
Me too. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Something to work on.
Yeah, yeah. So, but and also, you know, I I would echo, I think, what David mentioned about potentially pushing the back, the 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 side of the building a little bit further back. I I think that you could, I don't know how how it will work in terms of spacing cars and, you know, apartments. But I think that, you know, even a few feet probably could make a huge difference in that regard.
Right, right. Apartments are easy to adjust. It's the cars that are kind of fixed sizes, unfortunately. Right, and I just got confirmation from our civil engineer that he thinks it's about 29 feet to the peak of the building.
Okay. Okay. And I assume that the parking lot, the parking will be basically at the grade that it is right now, which is a little bit higher than the street. You have to sort of go up some. You're not going to dig down and and
Basically at street level, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Marina, I think it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the topography, once you get up to the top of the hill, starts to go down towards the shopping center, right? Like the street starts to go down?
Oh, okay, because my sense it was like there's like a little hump and then down.
There's hump, there's a hump on Nassau and then it starts coming down. So as you go further away from the existing building, the topo changes. So the change in height is less than the actual peak to peak.
I am
But again, you know,
I'm not sure about.
When when we come back,
Yeah, well, but
With our formal application, we'll testify to that and obviously have a lot more information and elevations to show you guys. I mean, I think the input is really helpful, you know, you know, Chris and Yeah, me too. You know, Chris and Marina and I were talking about that, the concept idea for planning is really helpful. So, you know, before we go too far with design and resources, and now as a developer or homeowner, you're tied into what you've designed, it's helpful to have this, you know, initial conversation. You know, it's good to know that, hey, we're flexible on parking. We're concerned about pedestrian circulation, vehicle circulation. And, you know, we knew coming in that Marina has her hands full in the sense that she's got to tie these two together in a way that is appropriate. We're sensitive to that. We know that, you know, this is the main corner and we're going to do our very best to do that. And, you know, we appreciate all the input that you guys have given us today.
Great. Well, thank you again, as Owen and others have said. I'm sorry, Mr. Bodikheimer, is that you?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I I've noticed that there's a member of the public who had their hand up. So I don't know if you had.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for, I had noticed that before, but hadn't looked up there in in a while. So are there other other comments or questions from board members before we hear from the public? Okay, seeing none, I see one hand up and that Maggie Schuler. If others of you who are attending the meeting would like to ask questions or express your views about this, would be good to raise your hand right now. And will you'll be brought over in the order in which you are raising your hands. Ms. Schuler, can you, oh, there you go. You'll need to unmute yourself. And because this is a a concept review, we don't, we won't go through the formality of swearing you in. We'll just trust that you're going to tell the truth.
Yeah.
Without making you swear.
Great, thanks. I'll keep it quick. And I I just, as a a neighbor and a resident on Nassau Street in this immediate area, I I did want to just express that I I do have some concerns about this development project in such a tight space to add density as some of the colleagues on or some of the 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 folks on the board mentioned, you know, from a pedestrian safety and just sheer density in what is a a town, jug town, not an urban area, as was so pointedly mentioned. And then I would just say, you know, I will be keen to understand how historic kind of addresses this building, given what appears to me as a very sizable addition in the back compared to the historic structure. I personally have been through the process of historic multiple times and I know that any piece of my home that's within the public right of way is subject to their, you know, approval, that it, you know, falls within those guidelines. So, you know, I understand you guys have great intentions and, you know, we'll do your best. I am interested to understand because right now, a four story building is not the norm in that neighborhood. And and it just seems too high in comparison to the original structure. But I guess we'll figure that out as the weeks and months pass, so. Just I'll be keenly watching, so that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Schuler. Are there other members of the public? I'm not seeing any other hands go up. We have, we do have eight folks, nine, including Ms. Schuler, who are, you know, observing slash attending the meeting just for everybody's information. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Any final comments for Mr. Barsky and Ms. Rubina? Okay, thank you both very much.
Thank you guys.
Forward to
For having us.
To seeing what what comes back to us. Bye, Mr. Tar. Thank you too.
You did good, Chris. That it for tonight?
We
Frank and Cohen to do his business.
Mr. Cohen?
Will you accept a move to adjourn?
Mr. Cohen has moved that we adjourn with someone like a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Oh, wait, wait, oh, I'm sorry, we've adjourned. Tenica Teo had her hand up. Perhaps she could
Oh, oh, I'm, I am sorry.
But I think it was after we closed the public hearing. I don't know whether we'd like to hear from her.
We did, and the applicant or potential applicant has left, but yeah, okay, I I would like to hear what she has to say.
As 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 Councilman Cohen was making his
Yeah, and I
And now her hand is down.
Oh, no, because she's been moved over.
Hi, Ms. Teo. Sorry, I thought you wanted her moved over. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I I did. I did, Ms. Philip. Thank you. And Ms. Teo, the 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 potential applicant left the meeting. I I was looking for hands raised and I did not see any.
I I have no comment about the application, actually. I have a
Oh, okay.
And I was told that there was a public comments meeting period generally at the end of the planning board meetings.
Actually, typically, we we do not do that. I think the council has a sort of open ended public comment at the beginning of their meetings for items that are not on the agenda. At Planning Board, we we typically do not hear public comment on matters that are not before the board, which is mentioned in our opening statement. But I I don't, I don't mean to say that to shut you down. What's on your mind? Well, what what what's on your mind? And if you can say it in three minutes or less.
Okay. Maybe it does have bearing on this on this particular case, but it's much more general than that. Long, long ago, in a city far, far away, I was a graduate student with a bicycle. And I lived on the fourth floor and I would carry my bicycle on my shoulder for stairs up because that's where I lived. Today, I wouldn't do that because A, I'm older and two, my bicycle is heavier. And if I lived in apartments, I would love to have some kind of storage space where I can park my bike and lock it. So that, you know, so that it's it's out of the weather and it's private and secure. And I'm not, and this is not just about a bicycle. I mean, you know, apartment dwellers are real people with real lives. And apartment dwellers might have a kayak or snowboard or, you know, bench press or a bench, a drill, a drill bench and other tools. They might have horseback riding gear that their husbands have banned from the living space because he didn't like the smell or, you know, whatever. And I think it would be awesome for apartments that are built in Princeton to acknowledge that the people who reside there are real and they have stuff that the rest of us would put in our garages. But apartments don't necessarily come with garages. So I'm just, I would like to ask you to think about that. And if, you know, if you say, no way, no way, Jose, then I will go home right now.
Oh, no, far from it. I mean, I I'm sorry to interrupt, but this this plan had had a a room for bike storage on the first level and it also had in separate sort of general storage area for tenants also on the first level. And and this board has been, I think, really attentive to bike accommodation, not just bike racks, but indoor bike storage. It was a key feature of the project at 195 Nassau that we saw some, probably months ago by now. I, what is time, you know?
I I remember.
But 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 your point is is well taken. And I I see Ms. Capazoli has her
I just, I just want to tell everyone that HPC has a public comment period towards the end of the meeting.
Ah, okay.
Feel free to stop by.
I I think this is a good comment for Justin to take under advisement for the master plan. It's really a question of, does our ordinance require sufficient parking for apartments? You know, just like we require open space for dwelling, we could be requiring external storage per apartment. I don't think we have that in the ordinance currently, but.
That's the case. The AHO up on 206 North, I know there's requirement for it. So, you know, we're definitely starting to implement that.
Yeah. But, okay, good, well.
That being said, the meeting is already over, so.
Yes, there was a motion and a second and even a vote, but I'm, thanks for raising your hand, Tenica, and
Thank you.
And raising a good point. Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody, thanks.
Thank you. Good night.
Be soon, couple of weeks, bye now.